Committee of the whole report, we have one item this evening, and that is the Renton Chamber of Commerce update starring Diane and Ashley Dobson. Take it away, ladies.
Thank you very much, Council President O'Halloran. Greetings, council members. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. As Councilmember O'Halloran has said, I'm Diane Dobson. I'm the current CEO of the Chamber. I've served in my capacity since February of 2020, so just prior to the pandemic. Was there for about three years previous with membership capacity.
I am Ashley Dobson. I am the Events and Relations Director at the Renton Chamber of Commerce. I have been there coming up on three years. Thank you for having us.
So we're here tonight to present to you on some of the tourism or impact to the community that the Chamber of Commerce, as far as the visitor center has. So we have the Chamber of Commerce is a separate, we are an entity, not-for-profit business networking organization, and we also have the privilege of running the visitor center for the city of Renton, which is not a City of Renton visitor center, but a visitor center in the city of Renton. So the building that we're currently in, just for, well, I'll even back up. The Chamber of Commerce was started back in 1909, was incorporated officially in 1924, so we are reaching our 100-year this next year. The building that we are currently in was purchased in 2012 from Burlington Northern, and at that time, 18% of the funding came with support of the LTAC funding at that time, and that was the lodging and tourism funds. And the commitment was made at the time by the city to help continue to support the Chamber and the visitor center operations. And so you'll see us approach the city every year for the lodging tax funding. We have a commercial kitchen space next door, was part of the BNSF's Spirit of Washington dinner train used to run out of the Chamber, and that was leased by Rain City Catering. They are still in that facility. They were there before the Chamber was. And so again, we're going to cover on the visitor center. So the visitor center, this is the team that runs the Chamber. We've got on the top row, there's myself. We have Darlene Larson as our executive admin. Lisa Shumoy is in Finance and Events. Kevin Hayes is Finance, and Ashley is Events and Communication. And then our board, we have, our executive board is our president, Sarah McNeesh. She represents the multi-service center. Danielle Smith, she is a small business owner with Cafe de la Loba and Wild Seed Consulting. We have Rick McMaster oversees Finance. He is small business owner with Vino. And your own James Albertson, who is our immediate past chair, no, not immediate past chair, past chair.
Past pastor.
Yes, a past, past chair, and has Sandler Enterprises' top-tier training. The next rows are our Board of Directors. We have Kevin Smith with the Renton School District. He is the CTE Advisory Head. We have Rosie Rourke from Team Rosie Rourke Real Estate. Sean Greenlee is a DEI consultant currently working with the University of Washington Medical Department. We have Renton Regional Fire Authority Chief Steve Heitman. We have Dr. Yoshiko Harden, who is the new president of the Renton Technical College. We have Mini Tafase from Small Business Owner Abyssinia Salons. We have Jay Townsend, who is a representative of First Financial Bank. Ryan Tomasic with Boeing. Ed Van Bailey with the City of Renton. Jacqueline Nguyen, whose business list is immense. Tra T, Snowy Village, Malakar, Papaya. She used to be OCHA, the Tea Palace. She has a long list of businesses that she owns and represents. And then Eric Gaston, who is one of the owners of Evergreen Market. So a good variety of representation on our board. So we have a marketing partnership with the City of Renton. I'm sure you're all aware of the same. The stakeholders in that marketing partnership are the City of Renton, Renton School District, Renton Technical College, Valley Medical Center, the Renton Chamber of Commerce, and now recently, the South Porter Hyatt is involved as well with the LTAC approach. We all contribute funds to the collective and collaborative approach of marketing the city for economic development and improvement. One of the things this last year that we did with marketing was we were recipients of a tourism grant opportunity for the third quarter of 2022, and this is an ad that you, that was at the Sea-Tac Airport. We partnered with the Hyatt on this. While we couldn't have any Hyatt advertising, they, clearly their hotel was, was featured in the imagery. We will be applying for another tourism grant for advertising for Q1 or 2 for 2024 as well. So the visitor center, we try to track our calls that come in, our requests for information, people stopping into the chamber. They don't all make it onto our tally sheet. What we did record, we have over, this last year, we had over 2,349 visitors that came in and asked questions about the city. We had over 4,915 phone calls, and we sent over 72 new resident packets or requests for Renton information. Just recently, there was an eight-year-old.
Yeah, a fourth grader who rode us from the East Coast, who's doing a report on Washington. And so we had the privilege of sending some things from Renton, and then also sending some things from our businesses in Renton as well.
And Darlene Larson handles most of that, our executive admin, and she is, she loves it, loves it. And I'll go back to our team as well. Our team, we have the most incredible team that is passionate about the city and the community, and they're all locals. And then Community Guides, over 30,000, no, we printed 30,000, so it wasn't over 30,000 Community Guides went out into the city. And we'll be working this year with a new company. This last year, we worked with Town Square Publishing. Town Square Publishing is going to be making 15,000 city maps for us. Those should be going to print, actually as we speak. And then we'll be working with Livability, which is another company, to do our business, our city directory this year. They have a greater online presence from Town Square Publishing, and in hopes of reaching more people that are looking to move to the city of Renton. So Events at the Chamber, these are some of the community drives that we supported this past year. And so, you know, East Side Baby Corner, School Supply Drive, and Diaper Drive, the Rosie Rourke Diaper Drive, Sidney Wilson House Holiday Items. For, I presume you all know Sidney Wilson House is the permanent transitional housing that is on Oakstale in the old Extended Stay. We were able to provide their Thanksgiving meals and their Christmas meals, as well as do a drive for supplies. The VFW Toys for Tots, Valley Medical Center Birthday Dreams, Salvation Army Holiday Giving Tree, Ukraine Families, DESC Games, Arts and Crafts. DESC is the Downtown Emergency Service Center. They were located at the Red Lion. We, it came to our attention early on in the pandemic when the de-intensification facility was opened, that their guests didn't have things to do, which I would logically think contribute to them finding things to do in the community or spending time in businesses. So we worked with the King County Library System to bring in internet to the location. We did drives for arts, crafts, and games, which enabled them to continue. Their program was South Seattle Community College in getting GEDs in education. We did men's clothing drive, holiday items for DESC, and then we worked with Toys for Tots with the Snow King Ice Arena, which I didn't put in the presentation because it's more of a Chamber item, and I'm not getting into Chamber stuff too much. We threw a winter ice skating party at Snow King Ice Arena this last year with over 450 people from the community. It was phenomenal.
And what also didn't make it on this list is the drive that we worked with the Rose Gifting Coffee House for refugees from Afghanistan as well, providing for families coming here.
All right. So the Events at the Chamber, we've got the imagery here. I wanted to talk about some of the events that we've done. You'll keep track of that. We work with the Small Business Development Center, SCORE, and Business Impact Northwest to do monthly drop-in business mentorship. We worked with Angela Beard from the Fundraising Academy and City University to provide classes to individuals in starting their own nonprofits. We did two chocolate crawls. One was in conjunction with the Coffee Crawl. In downtown, we had over 350 and about 400 people the second time. And it's, it's really neat to track those because we see how many people are coming from out of area, as opposed to just Renton residents. We did a, October is the Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so we had a series of sessions every week where we provided classes, education, training. Councilmember Van, thank you very much for, for participating in that as well. We did Renton Acts of Kindness, where you, just encouraging kindness out into the community. We had the Juneteenth Celebration. We did Poker with the Police. We did an emergency feeding program, food distribution. We worked with American Pickers on identifying locations here in the community that may be used on their, their upcoming shows. And we were designated also as a safe space. Another thing that we did this last year was, because of COVID, the one-night count in the community couldn't be conducted, or they chose not to conduct it in the same fashion. So we partnered with King County to do the interviews. And so they did interviews of individuals who are experiencing homelessness and a referral program. And so we worked with them through the Chamber. We had hundreds of people coming through for, for about two and a half weeks in March-ish, the first quarter. We did Coffee with the Cop. And vegetarian food truck. Priti Shridhar from the city connected us with Northwest Share, which provides a free vegetarian food truck. They go into areas that maybe underserves or, or low income, and they identified South Renton as being an area that would benefit from this. So we hosted the free food truck and once a month through 2022. In addition to the Northwest Share, we had food trucks at the Chamber, generally once a month, if not two to three times a month, providing opportunity for food. And only the vegetarian food truck was free, though. Everybody else was, was purchase your own. So those are some of the events that we were instrumental in. We also had partners that we partnered with for supported events. We partnered with the Sudha Sharma to bring International Women's Day and the De'ali Festival of Lights to the Chamber. Really beautiful event that featured vendors and celebration. We partnered with Francesca Vargas-Smith with Elevate PR Management to bring a number of events to the Chamber. We had the Rising in Greatness Beyond Black History, which was an absolutely phenomenal event. We did the BLM Art Walk. We had multiple Black Love Markets, one to two a month. And then she also did the Pride Month, Spilling the Tea Party, a boozy tea party, the Juneteenth Celebration, Prism, which is a guided meditation and writing therapy, which I would recommend to anybody if, on the, the council of, to attend their next event. We did the Cultivate Artist Collective, and we worked with the Hatchery Co-op to provide ment, excuse me, vendor markets for, for small business owners. And we partnered with Ashley Dobson, who is an employee, but she's also has, was a member of the Chamber before she, before she became an employee, on putting on the night markets, provide vendor business support, put on the waterfront market at the Hyatt during the summer, the Renton Night Market, and Renton Neat. And the Renton Night Market was a collaboration with the Urban Market, Cugini Florists, and Rain City Catering as well. Other community groups use the, the Chamber building for their events. We have the South Renton Neighborhood Association, which is the South Renton Connection. They do events and meetings. The Renton Downtown Partnership hosts events out of the Chamber. The North Renton Neighborhood Association and the Chabad Jewish Center of Renton. And so you'll see a lot of cleanups. They did the Chocolate, the Walk. They did a Halloween party. They did a picnic. So it's, it's a, really a space that the surrounding community has learned to use. And it is a wonderful gift and opportunity for the Chamber to have the community use it. It was really a sorely underused building previously. I mean, Chamber activities are great, but it is a beautiful thing to see the community taking advantage of that space as well. Other community endeavors that we were really supported in 2022 is the African-American Men's Wellness Walk, the Career Fair, which we partner with the City of Renton and Renton Technical College. We hosted the Candidates Meet and Greet. We were sponsors with the Battle of the Badges. We hosted Candidates Forum. We sponsored the Prizes in Renton River Days. And then we had opportunities for all of our staff and, as well as other business representatives, to receive mental health first-stage training, which we felt was really critical coming out of the pandemic. We were, this last year, recognized with the InterCity Capital Connections as the leaders in business referrals. The business referrals that are made in Capital Connections is, if the headquarters have more than 51% of its physical operations located in an economically distressed area, or have more than 40% of the employees residing in an economically distressed area, which Renton and downtown Renton in particular qualifies as. And so we were the leading, leading referrals for business referrals in this, which provides small business owners the opportunity for mentorship, training, and access to capital. The training that they receive is, is really MBA-quality design training, and we partnered with Kaiser Permanente on that. So with the various events at the Chamber, we had approximately 8,030 people that attended the events at the chambers. With our events off-site, we had approximately 4,500 people attend, or 4,560 other community groups that participated at the Chamber. We had about 5,630 people. And then other community endeavors, we reached about 4,770. So the Chamber is, and the visitor center has facilitated over 22,990 visits. And then, on behalf of the Renton Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, ambassadors, and members, we say thank you to the City of Renton for your continued support with the lodging and the Renton Visitor Center. So that is it as far as our formal presentation. If you have any questions, we are happy to answer the same.
Madam President?
Yes?
Uh, thank you, Diane. Don't have a question. I just want to say, and my colleague, Councilmember Perez will remember this. A few years back, we had an issue with the visitor center in LTAC, and there being the tracking mechanism of what's going on there. So I want to applaud you for the work you've done in tracking what's happening with the visitor center. I really appreciate seeing the numbers and the data that you have as far as the amount of events there, the amount of people who've come, the amount of people who have contacted you with the visitor center. I really do appreciate that. So thank you.
That was, I will give applause to the individual sitting behind me, Marcy Palmer. She really honed in on, on, on tracking. It's, and it's hard. We have people stop by all day long or, or call, you know, what's the name of the cat in the shop that's located downtown? So there's questions, questions all day and
And kudos to Darlene, who's also not here, for taking the work that Marcy did and bringing it forward. So.
Yeah. If I can have a follow-up. Yes, I do remember perfectly. This was, if I'm correct, 2016.
Yeah, I believe it was.
And, and the response has been marvelous since the upgrade of the website, which was a big topic of conversation during that Cow meeting, you know, what are we using the funds for? And, and, and we need to be more transparent about that, this LTAC funding. I'm very surprised where the Chamber is today, but it was, you will agree with me, 2016. And I'm, and I'm very happy about the partnership that we have with the city. Has not, not always been as healthy, and I think the last four years, it has been very strong. And, and obviously you can see right now for the response of the people. And going through the pandemic, that's, that's for me very important, because we need to remember that at least three years, you guys were not able to do the normal business, but normally we do, you know, be out and about, providing information to people that were visiting the city, because nobody was going anywhere, and nobody was doing absolutely anything. And you guys were able to maintain this organization, driving through the worst of the worst possible times that we have experienced of human beings in this, in our lifetimes. I want to thank you especially for your leadership. Obviously, your team, I know that it's not that job of one person, but your love for Renton and your love for this community is being, is, is, is what we have seen in every step of the way. And thank you for taking the rental of chambers, and especially the visitor center where it is today. I know that you have bigger and better goals for the future, but today, if someone asks you, where is the LTAC money being used for this? We can point out, it's here, and you can see it, and this is the way we're using it. So I do appreciate it. And thank you, President, for bringing it back again, the, the, the Chamber to this, to this forum, for us to be able to, to have this conversation. Thank you.
Madam President. So first, I'll say, you know, even for somebody who, quote-unquote, with the chambers in the know, I have this stuff, no, over half, I didn't even know. And I dare anybody to say, oh, yeah, I know, they did all that. We're involved in that. So excellent job in putting it all together, and, and I echo their comments. The one thing that I will add, I know you were mainly talking about visitor center stuff and that sort of thing, but, you know, through the pandemic, the one thing that stands out to me from the Chamber, communication from the Chamber, were to every business, every small business who was on the mailing list, and maybe somehow, even if they weren't, I don't think there was a grant, free money, PPP reminder, whatever, that did not get into and in front of those businesses. And I think that is a direct, you are a direct contribution to some of these businesses even surviving, because so much working in the business, you know, the, the, the free money, the notice, the notifications, the reminders, it came to them. And that, I think, was invaluable. And I know it wasn't in here, but I want to point that out and say, on behalf of the businesses in Renton, thank you for that, because you were just very diligent in that, and I know everybody appreciated that.
Anybody want to go first before anybody goes second? Yes.
Thank you, Council President. I will be forth to echo all my colleagues. But I, again, thank you so much for the presentation. Not just that it's beautifully put, but I think it's also the work that I see, the Renton Chamber of Commerce, the visitor center itself, staff, you, under your leadership, Diane, the work that you've done prior to pandemic, and even during the hardest part of our time, at least my, one of the hardest part of my lived experiences. But thank you. I do have a few questions. Can't let you go without asking questions. That's part of my job. I do, I have a few. So one is, in terms of the number breakdown that we mentioned here, the impact to 22,990 visits, are we talking about just people who are there coming repeatedly, or is it a one-time visit? How, how are we keeping more of a tracking data?
It would be an individual event, tracking it. So we wouldn't track repeat visitors from, from event to event to event. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, so individual event.
Individual, right. Yeah. We could have the same person attend all, all of the events, and they're going to have a count every time they come to an event, as opposed to this is one person.
Actually, if I may.
Okay, go ahead.
So I went to the Renton Downtown Partnership cleanup on Saturday morning. Michael and I were there, and I think there must have been 60 people showed up, 75. It was incredible. I mean, I remember pre-pandemic, we'd be lucky to get six people out there. But there was, there was some question, which I wasn't able to answer with any specificity, is what is the relationship between the Chamber and the Renton Downtown Partnership Main Street? I know that's their program name, but what, if anything, is that relationship?
Thank you for the question. So, and it's a question that we get frequently. So the Renton Downtown Partnership is a separate 501(c)(3) nonprofit, run by Christian Schweitzer. They, they were formed while my predecessor was, was serving Vicky Baxter. And at the time, it was, and I was a member of the organizational board for the Downtown Partnership. At the time it was organized, it was determined that the City of Renton and the Chamber of Commerce would have permanent ex officio roles on their board for the Downtown Partnership. So we are collaborative beings, as opposed to working under or for, it's just two people that are, two organizations that are working side by side. We are, we have, the bylaws for the Downtown Partnership provide that each Renton Chamber representative serves. I had served once Vicky left, and then I just stepped down off the board this last year, and Danielle Smith, who is on our board and also serves as a project manager with the Chamber, is serving as our Renton Downtown Partnership liaison.
So it's collaborative, side by side?
Yep.
Not, you're, you're not duplicating efforts, or?
No, well, there was a period of time that the Downtown Partnership didn't have an executive director, and it was, is run by the board. And so at that time, you saw more advocacy coming out of the Chamber for some of the things that were happening downtown, like the downtown construction or the pavilion, things like that. The Chamber took more of a, hey, we're here, we're going to uplift and support those, these downtown businesses. Now that Christian is there, the Chamber has been able to kind of step back a little bit more and say, hey, you have a champion, and we really need to dig into our businesses in the, in the surrounding area, so they feel as loved and supported as those downtown businesses too. The downtown, you know, they struggled. They had a lot of challenges, hit them all at once. And so it was good for them to have multiple organizations looking out for their best interests, but Christian is really capable, and, and we're there to uplift and support as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the Downtown Partnership is members. They are members of the Chamber.
You put it perfectly, President O'Halloran. The relationship is collaborative.
Very much.
Yes. Thank you, Council President. I have two more questions. So I see the number as far as over 72, 72 packets were given to new residents, right? So residents packets. So how is an individual able to get access? Or is it how, how does that, you know, if I'm a new resident, do I go to the visitor center, and then I get it? Or do you advertise? How's that program going? I would like to know.
So it's new residents or information packets. And I clarified that because we have like the eight, or the eight-year-old who requested, requested information. The majority of time, we receive contact from someone that is looking to move to Renton. And so they are looking for information about the city before they come this direction. We provide tangible, hard copies of information from the visitor center. We also point them in the direction of the website as well.
And then do get a few people that are already here and are eager to learn more about the city.
And we have, actually, there's people that are coming here on, on temporary basis, like employers that send somebody there for, for three months at a time. Will come in, find out about the city.
Thank you. And then my last question. As you all know, I'm a vegetarian and a vegan wannabe. I hear that the free vegetarian, the free vegetarian food truck was last year. So is it continuing this year, or what is the program like?
We, I, I encouraged them to find a locate, find a location. They really want to serve the unhoused population. And I told them, we are more than happy to continue to pop up at the Chamber, but I don't think their impact in that population was as great as they had hoped for. And so we've encouraged a couple of other locations, for example, like the Sidney Wilson House, going in at the end of the month when residents' funds and, on their, their meal cards are dropping down. And so we were able to identify a few other locations, like Sustainable Renton, encourage them to pop up during their drive-through, that they could reach their intended art audience a little bit better and more effectively.
The Reach location actually happened to be another spot we recommended.
Madam President? Diane, I also want, so question and, a comment and a question. My comment is, I applaud you guys for the events that you've done at the, at Chamber Office that would seem to be outside the scope of what a Chamber or visitor center has done to bring more people into the building. So that's my comment. My question is, if someone wants to collaborate with the Chamber on an event, do they just contact the Chamber Office, or what do they do to go about making that happen?
Chamber Office. Yep. And you don't have to be a member of the Chamber to, to have events there. We're, we're happy to partner with members of the community as well, so that the space is used. There's, there's a nominal charge for people that are not members of the Chamber, just for staffing, cleaning, et cetera. And the members of the Chamber have an opportunity for a one-time use. And that's what we say, one-time use. However, many times, they, they use it more than once. We haven't had anybody, you know, take advantage of it, if you will.
And before the pandemic, I remember that people just used to stop. And before the pandemic, I remember that people just used to stop by the Chamber a lot. Now that you are open and going on business, do you feel that people are start coming by as well as much as they used to? Or they're still not sure if they should be visiting as much the Visitor Center as before?
It's our most efficient times to work. Sometimes you'll see us down there at 11, 12, one or two o'clock in the morning because we have visitors all day long, all day long. And it's a beautiful thing. It's great to get out and connect and hear their stories and why you're in Renton and what you're looking for and hearing the history that people bring forward that they're, they're, they're recounting as well. We've had people come in that are, are looking at the Spirit of Washington because they were married on the train or married at the Visitor Center. And it's really a wonderful opportunity. But in answer, yes, people, people are out and people want to talk.
Thank you.
And we're still giving out masks and, and hand sanitizer as well. So we have people that come in regularly to pick up their supply of masks.
Thank you.
Madam President? Speaking of visitors to the Chamber, I know in the past there have been some unwanted visitors to the Chamber in and around the area, back and, and that sort of thing. I'm curious as to, because obviously, I mean, you've pointed out, I mean, the, the value of a lot of things going on there and we want to make sure to keep this area vibrant and protected and that sort of thing. What's been the latest as far as some of the unwanted activities? Is, you gotten a handle on that? Or is that kind of ongoing and just not in the news cycle, if you will?
Well, thank you for the opportunity that you just gave me to say kudos to the Renton Police Department. We had a break-in last week and someone had forced pride, our, our double-bolted door open and stole a computer and a bike, an expensive bike. And the, the nice thing about it was it was a very unique identifiable bike. And two days later, the Renton Police Department, from a picture, saw the individual riding the bike and were able to stop them and arrest them. They also had a bike on their back that they had just stolen from Walmart. So, so thank you and kudos to the Police Department for the swift and thorough response. In answer to the question, you know, if you can't get rid of what you don't, don't want, influx what you do want. And all of this positive activity at the Chamber has really made a difference in keeping other types of foot traffic down. We've also worked with Sandra Havlick at the Renton Police Department on the Septet Approach. We've, everything's lit up. We have our shrubbery and, and bushes were cleared out. Thank you to Celebration Foursquare Church because they come down and volunteer and do yard work and really keep things neat and clean. And the broken window theory of we're keeping our space clean and presentable so that way other people don't feel compelled to, to take advantage of it. We still get foot traffic off the tracks.
Pretty regularly.
I'd say if not every day, every other day, somebody's coming in. And, you know, we get people that come in and they go through our, they try to go through our front office or, oh gosh, we had one individual one day. I wasn't paying attention as close as I should have and they started to rearrange things. I was by myself working in the back. And so staff.
Recording in progress.
Staff now has permission, please lock the door if you're working by yourself and put a sign up that says to knock. So it's, we see it, but we, we control our space.
I will just throw a comment out there. The mental health first aid training that we were able to provide for business owners was huge in how we approached the people that are coming into the Visitor Center as well. Was a, I was so excited to be able to go through that training with the types of visitors that we get there. So.
Darlene, upfront, did an amazing job when people come in in referring them to resources and making a connection with the individuals. And so we, it ends up being a, many times a positive experience for the person who stops by in, in trying to find something beneficial. We just received word as well that Melissa Glenn is going to be volunteering with us once a week. And so that's, that's another opportunity for engagement and somebody who's far more wise in, in the area of human services than, than any of us could ever claim to be.
It is a silver lining for us that when these people come in, we get to refer them to incredible members. You know, we have a lot of nonprofits that are a part of the Chamber and a lot of them offer services that these people need or are looking for. So it's, it's great for us that we get to showcase these incredible organizations in the community. And that's like the first desk if you walk in. It's right there to the right. All those kinds of services are easy to grab. So.
Council President, yeah, I, you just kind of took the words out of my mouth. As Councilmember Albertson was talking about the work that you do for the businesses. I know we have Ranu, right, Renton Area Nonprofits Unite. So definitely kudos to the work, not just for businesses, but nonprofits and, and how you approach certain individuals coming to the, the Chambers with that perspective of service, right? Nonprofit help and any resource referral. I do have a question in terms of the, our Downtown Patrol District Unit. I think we started last week or the week before. I can't remember. Time seems to phase out. But have you had any interaction with our officers there? Because I certainly was walking around and seeing our officer walk in the beat and getting to know businesses. I mean, most of them have gone downtown, but certainly any interaction with our, our officers in that context of the Downtown Patrol District Unit?
Not specifically as the Downtown Patrol District. Yeah. But we have, we have, it wouldn't surprise me if they don't stop by the Chamber because we have other engagement and opportunities with, with officers at the Chamber.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Very informative. It's great to see how, how involved and how, how many people you're getting through the door and attracting to all these different events. It's, it's truly a hidden gem in the city to have you guys working so hard to promote the community at large. And, and I do agree that we need to emphasize businesses all across the city. And so I was very, actually, I'll just make a comment here. I was happy to hear that the Renton Downtown Partnership is also interested in promoting businesses across the city, even though their name says downtown. They are taking a much broader view. So that's wonderful. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.